Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Seeley.
Here.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Stand up for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item two, superintendent's remarks. Yes, as Mr. President sure, sure, first we are aware, we had an issue the other day on Monday, and I have a statement prepared by our solicitor to read, to give as much information as we possibly can. The faculty and staff of the Brownsville area school district are always diligent in their efforts to protect those who are subject to actions they deem appropriate. Recently, it was discovered that a middle school student was in possession of a list. The administration faculty available immediately investigated this matter, and following proper school district protocol, took the necessary steps to have the student in question removed from the district, and the parents of the students whose names appeared on the list were notified. The students whose names appeared on the list did not know that their names were on the list. Proper authorities were contacted, and will take the actions, and will take the actions that those authorities deem appropriate. The student in question will not be returning to the Brownsville area school district this year, and the student's status for the future is undetermined. The identity of the student who prepared the list, as well as the students whose names appeared on the list, is confidential, and the district will not reveal the identities of those students. I personally would like to commend the administration and any staff that were involved in this matter, as it was handled properly, properly, and promptly, and there was never any threat to any of our students. I also have some awards, award information I'd like to notify the community with. On February, from February 12th to 14th, Christian Sessick, a student in the Brownsville area school district, attended a PA Music Educators Association Region State One course at Blackhawk High School. The course was an audition group of approximately 100 students from the Fayette, Greene, Westmoreland, Washington, Allegheny, Mercer, Lawrence Beaver, and Butler Counties. During the festival, Christian had the opportunity to sing more than eight hours each day under the direction of Dr. Paul Head, Choral Director and Director of Choral Activities of the University of Delaware. Christian was one of only two students from Fayette and Greene Counties that were auditioned at district course in January and made the cut to move to the region, region, and state course. On Wednesday afternoon, Christian was required to audition at the festival to keep his spot in the course and to be considered to move on to the all-state course to be held in Hershey in April. Christian received the 10th highest score out of the 120 students from the entire state of Pennsylvania. This is quite an accomplishment for Christian, he's been involved in this in years past, and he's continued to work hard and represented not only Brownsville but our region as well. I'd like to congratulate him and his family for his efforts. Also, on February 26th, 10 Brownsville area high school AP US history students competed in the California University of Pennsylvania National History Day competition. The competition was designed for students who have a special interest in social studies and a willingness to research, create, and share projects they're, they are passionate about. The 10 students that competed formed three groups that created the following projects, which swept the awards. Women's rights throughout the wars, the evolution of African-American rights, and women's rights. The women's rights through the wars received first place, the evolution of African-American rights received second place, and women's rights received third place. These are our students. The following students were involved: Jessica Bittenger, Megan Dunleavy, Victoria Dubos?
Dubos.
Uh, what is it?
Dubos.
Dubos, I'm sorry. Brooke Murray, Tucker Pritz, Shane Robach, Jacob Richichar, Jenna Schumar, Francesca DeCarlo, and Brianna Petrowski. I'd like to congratulate them and their families. Also, at this time, the Brownsville area high school basketball team has a presentation to the Board of Directors. Mr. Bashir, coach.
On behalf of my team, my coaching staff, and everyone involved in our, in our success this year, I would like to present our Section 5 AA plaque to the school district and the community. We would like to thank everyone who supported us from the beginning. A lot of hard work was put in the offseason. I want to introduce a few of my players that came with us today. This is Carl Della Pena, senior. This is Nick Despot, a senior, and Michael Carney, a senior. A lot of guys aren't here tonight, but everybody put in a lot of hard work, and we appreciate everything that everyone was able to do for us, from the Board of Directors, to the administration, to the faculty, and all the staff. Thank you, everyone, and we'll do everything we can to be back here again next year to get you another.
Take a picture.
Good work, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good work.
Thank you, sir.
Come on, Casey Beach.
That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Item three, public remarks on agenda items only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and nature of business.
My name is Mike Seaberry. I heard about the incident the other day.
It's not on the agenda, you have to wait to the end of the meeting.
You cannot speak unless it's an agenda item, sir.
I cannot let you speak by rule. I cannot let you speak by rule, sir. You can wait to the end of the meeting and bring it to us. You can only speak of what's on this agenda. That's our rules.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, sir, that's the way we do things here. There is a public part at the end of the meeting, should you wish to speak. We'll run an orderly meeting. Without that, excuse you. Anyone else on agenda items? Excuse me, sir, what was that?
Juror, reduce this. Somebody give me your opinion.
Are you making a threat, sir? Are you making a, are you making a threat? Mr. Carney, escort him out, please. Off the property. Sorry about that, public. This is a business meeting. Try to conduct it that way. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items, please come forward. If it's not agenda, you have to wait to the end of the meeting, as we've done it for 20 years. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one. Item four, adoption of agenda and related materials for cooperation in minutes. Motion by Director Taravicki, second by Director Bang. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Item five, approval of the February 17th, 2014, February 20th, 2014, and March 3rd, 2014, regular board minutes. Motion by Director Taravicki, second by Director Seeley. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Item six, Director Bang.
I move for the approval of the February 2014 General Fund Capital Fund Title I, Title II, A, to the Cafeteria Fund Treasure and Financial Reports.
Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes. Item seven, approval of the following funds you have before you. Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes. Item eight, Attorney Davis.
I have no report.
Thank you, sir. Education Director Dorsey.
Item A, I move to approve the school picnic at Iowa Park in SoCal for Saturday, May 24, 2014.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item B, I move to add Jason Young to the intermediate unit one emergency substitute list.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item C, I move to hire Jamie Enfield, or Enfield, as a three-hour cook at Fox Donahue.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Oh, sorry, Personnel Director Delaware.
I may move to add Paul Dean to the non-professional substitute list. Michelle French, Patricia Stetson, Barbara Ehloss, Victoria Wolf, and Christie Zinn.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Bang. Questions? Question, all paperwork in order, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item B, I move to add Jason Young to the intermediate unit one emergency substitute list.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Item C, I move to hire Jamie Enfield, or Enfield, as a three-hour cook at Fox Donahue.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Item D, I move to approve the Brownsville school police policy.
Motion by Director Delarose, second by Director Taravicki. Questions?
Question. In that policy, which we can name?
We took that out, man.
This is just passing the policy to be, names to be determined at a later date.
Very good.
Also, at this point, procedurally, after this is passed, it will go to the courts, and a judge will then sign off on the approved policy.
Then they will come back so that we can sign off on the persons?
Oh, yeah, we, the board has to then come back after that, Mr. Taravicki. Roll call, please. Roll call, those requested. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes. Item B, Director Bang.
I move to acknowledge the notification of following respiratory tax sales from Washington County Tax Revenue Department and authorize the President of the Board to sign the consent of the sale on behalf of the district on parcel ID 670001000100500.
Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
I move to acknowledge the notification of the following respiratory tax sale from Fayette County Tax Claim Bureau and authorize the President of the Board to sign the consent of the sale on behalf of the district, ID number 19 dash 07 dash 0036.
Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
I move to accept the policy maintenance annual fee from the Pennsylvania School Board Association.
Motion by Director Bang.
Second.
Second by Director Taravicki. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
Consider a motion to accept the contract from Centerville Clinics for medical exams for students in grade one, six, 11, and all special needs students every third year at a fee of $9 for each medical exam for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Taravicki. Questions?
Question. I, I don't know the clarification on this, but with the new Obamacare and everything, and the requirement that everybody carries a health insurance, how does this affect us as a district to pay for these exams?
I don't know if the Obamacare actually addresses this part of it, because this is something that school districts.
But if they have medical insurance, would it not pay for these exams?
I don't know. You mean, if I had my job and my.
Right.
We do this as a, as a health precaution for the district. It's been forever. It's been, yes.
I understand that, but the laws have changed with the Obamacare and requirement of health insurance. It used to be a thing that was, was addressed at expense to us.
Absolutely.
And now that there's a requirement, I'm, I was trying to get a clarification, that why can't we build their insurance?
I can say this, in the meetings that superintendents and the business managers have had pertaining to the new healthcare laws, this is not.
This has nothing, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Assett.
Yes. grounds director Harvey, I move to authorize the advertising for lawn care services for the athletic fields. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Bang. Questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Aye. Is that a aye, nay, or anything? Nay. Well, I'm scared to talk to him.
We'll clarify that. Okay. That was, oh, there was the.
It wasn't a delay, huh? I know a little slut sometimes. I move to approve schematic designs for the elementary school project. Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Delarose. Questions?
Question. What's the management?
These are the designs that, if you recall, not at the meeting on Monday, but the previous meeting, they came back with, and we approved the.
The planning, okay. This is for those.
That's for that plan.
Because I ain't getting on Monday, I didn't understand that. Okay, got you.
I probably approved it last.
Yeah, but this, this is the overall schematic design with the rooms as they are.
We, at the last meeting, we approved the conceptual.
Yeah.
This is the schematic designs of that conceptual that was approved.
It's nothing more than what it was in the.
We had to approve a concept.
Right.
Once they finalized that concept, and it was based on that concept, they can. We haven't seen it since that concept, they.
That's the next.
Use the schematics now.
That was what, A or B?
B two.
B two.
What you'll see at the next meeting, they'll bring that, and plus the input they'll get from, if you recall, in Monday's meeting, they talked about meeting with administrators, teachers, staff. That's the next step in, in the overall design. This is, this, we're approving the schematic, the basic design that we approved in D.
I would like the minister to reflect that it is schematic design B two.
Okay. That was what I approved last month, right? It's, it's, it's just a formalization of the same thing.
That's a good idea.
It's, it's recorded. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
I move to approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with LR Kimball for geotechnical engineering services for the elementary school complex.
Motion by Director Harvey, second by Director Delarose. Questions?
Is there a cost associated with this? There's no money here. Is this free?
Nope, it's, it's in the contract that we signed and approved, when we approved Kimball.
Shouldn't there be a cost?
There should be a cost.
32,775 dollars.
Say it again, Mike.
32,775.
And FYI, Mr. Dorsey, that's all in the contract that we approved, when we started the project. I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Taravicki.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bain.
Yes.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
May I request that that approve the date on that, on that, that design on that professional service?
Today's date.
Today's date.
Okay, we're going to go into analytics, I'd like to put something out to the board, without going into executive session, obviously. I feel we have a problem with, we're trying to sell Cardell School, okay? Now, I think the board's aware of how long we have paid sewage, upwards of 1,000 a month for a school that's closed. It's now down to what, Michael, 600?
610 dollars.
They are never going to let us negotiate with anyone, and the people who are interested in schools said they will not buy the school.
The hangup, the hangup for them putting in a bid on the school right now is the sewage.
So, what, what I'm getting at is, they're, they don't want us to sell the school because they're going to collect 600 a month for as long as we set there with that empty bill. And I'm saying the board maybe look at stop payment immediately, let them take us, because if I'm correct, we can turn it over to an authority and give it to them, and that's your, your baby. Because the people that are interested, am I right, correct, Mike?
Yep.
Say a building across the road, they'll pay less than 100 dollars a month sewage, but they're charging us 600 dollars a month. I know it's a school building, and they say that's negotiated into their contract when they built the sewage plant. Okay, but that, they didn't know the school was going to close, so for how many months have we paid 1,000? Over a year?
It's two years.
Two years. Okay, so maybe 20 some thousand dollars is paid to a building that's closed. So, at this point, it's not on the agenda, but if it ever comes up in the future, I'm voting to stop payment. Maybe that building will get sold then. That's my feelings, I don't want to risk the board's feelings.
But they fly out, said they won't renegotiate that fee.
They're not talking to the.
They're, they're not saying anything.
Not saying anything.
So, actually, what you're saying, maybe they'll get, you'll get some reaction, and maybe they'll say something if you don't pay the bill.
They did the last time we stopped payment. I mean, I, I know that's probably not something we want to do, but I'm saying that the building is in limbo. It is not going to get sold, as long as they're getting 600 dollars a month off of us, they're not, they're not going to talk to any buyers. They're not going to talk to any buyers. Now, if they want to build a scale to, with the buyers, they'll charge you 100 dollars a month, 200, 300, but that building is, we're not going to, it's going to sit there. Now, I understand legally that we can turn that building over to them, here, it's yours, donate to you, now you sell it. They don't want that, I don't think, maybe they do.
So, if I understand this correctly, the prospective buyer will not put in a bid? They're hung up on that. That fee for the sewage. That fee, because, you know, it's going to be close to what their loan would be, you know, on, on their loan payment, you know, it's 610 dollars. So, that fee comes along with the transfer. The sewage authority, the Redstone, council sewage authority, is not commenting on that at all. One way or another, what they will. There is, right now, a proposal in the House. Right now, governments, school districts, municipalities, counties can donate property to each other. There is a proposal in the House right now to amend that, to allow donations to municipal facilities. If that passes, then you can donate to them, or you can stop payment on it and produce a lien, that when it comes that time, they, they would have.
We don't know the buyer, but the buyer is saying he wants to buy the building.
He wants to buy the building.
But he will not pay the sewage.
I have, I have received an email today from the Realtor that said.
If, if somebody buys, somebody buys that building, say, I don't know who the buyer is or what they are, but what I think, it's not going to be a school anymore. So, the water usage will not be equal to what it was when it was a school, so why would they want to pay that type of a fee?
At our point, I think the whole.
You're going to need to send some type of a ladder requesting response.
We don't have to give the other two parts of property, correct? Just the one.
I'm just asking for. I don't know, I don't know.
Do something tonight.
I can't figure out where this school is on.
Let's, let's, I have a recommendation. Why don't we have our solicitor send a letter to the authority stating that we have a buyer, the buyer does not wish to use it as a school, but as a part of a development of a business?
And that's it. If that original agreement was because it was a school, if it's not a school any longer, how can you legally still charge that same fee? That contract's done.
That was my argument months ago when I said.
For two years that we've paid that 1,000, it was 1,000. Now, since we've complained about it, correct, Michael, it went from 1,000 to 610.
Right, 610.
To 610. Two months ago was 1,000. It went to 610 now.
And we turned the water off in the building, so there is no sewage. So, there's no. You're paying debt service.
Yeah.
So, we're paying, you know, there's.[1575.13]
Yeah, but isn't that debt service from, from putting it in?
Yeah, and they just...
And what does that cost to putting it in? There's got to be a final cost to that, isn't there? Not a lifetime cost.
It's, just like any bond issued, it's going to be a twenty, thirty, forty-year bond whenever they took out it.
Okay, because like...
But they can alter it.
If you have sewage coming in your house, you have sewage, it's six thousand dollars to have your hookups and you're done. You pay that bill until that six thousand dollars paid off. Once that six thousand dollars paid off, it's clear. What is it, the amount that it is for that school?
Six hundred and ten dollars until the bond is taken off.
Our bonds paid off.
Their bond.
Their bond.
Their bond.
They borrowed money to do the sewage plant.
So, your recommendation is to send them a letter?
Send them a letter requesting that that be altered or reviewed, because we do have a person interested in the development as a place of business.
And what you have to look at, if this is happening now, and we build an elementary school, move all the kids up here, and we want to put other buildings on the market, we're, we're going to have, it's going to happen again. So, let's solve this, solve this out.
And that's my re, my recommendation. We're happy to take any action tonight.
It won't happen if you don't pay the bill or... We have, we have no plan.
Let's see if we can negotiate, if we can go with that.
I thought I'd go with that.
Yeah, I mean, and, and then, once we have an answer for that, we'll, we'll renegotiate it. The board can make a determination based on that.
All right, thank you. Do we, do we need to make a motion for that? Is this authorized?
It's authorized.
Yeah, it's, it's a service.
Athletic Director, Afton.
Item A, I move to hire Larry Laman as Assistant varsity football coach, two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step three of the athletic salary scale, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item B, I move to hire Tom Sandella as Assistant varsity football coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, twenty-one hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item C, I move to hire Jeremy Thomas, Assistant varsity football coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, twenty-one hundred dollars.
Second. Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item D, I move to hire Scott Rowbuck as Assistant varsity football coach, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step ten of the athletic salary scale, forty-six hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item E, I move to hire Juan Olman as Assistant varsity football coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, twenty-one hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item F, I move to hire Beau Quatron as Middle School Head Football Coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step three of the athletic salary scale, seventeen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item G, I move to hire Rick Frisco as Middle School Assistant Football Coach, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step one of the athletic salary scale, one thousand dollars.
Yes.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions?
Question. Not specifically to this act of one, but to all, and all, all, all these numbers. Is, I just need a clarification. Is there different scales for varsity and junior varsity?
Yes, primary school, middle school, there is.
Okay. I think you, I think some of these scales are extremely low for the commitment of Texas.
That may be true, but your coaching seasons are shorter than, okay, junior high level.
Okay, so there is a difference between the levels. Thank you.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item H, I move to hire Rachel Bruski as Girls Volleyball Head Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step six of the athletic salary scale, three thousand dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item I, I move to hire Beth Bittner as Girls Volleyball Assistant Coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, thirteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item J, I move to hire Brian Nicholson as Cross Country Head Coach for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step ten of the athletic salary scale, thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item K, I move to hire James Pfeifer as Cross Country Assistant Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step six of the athletic salary scale, two thousand dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item L, I move to hire Chris McVanas as Head Golf Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step ten of the athletic salary scale, thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item M, sorry, M, I move to hire Sailing Goschalk as Boys Soccer Head Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, twenty-three hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item N, I move to hire Ed Bonner as Boys Soccer Assistant Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step one of the athletic salary scale, twelve hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item O, I move to hire Shane Goschalk as Girls Soccer Head Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step one of the athletic salary scale, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Item T, I move to hire Joe Donkers as Girls Soccer Assistant Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step two of the athletic salary scale, thirteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item Q, I move to hire Harry Roughcorn as Middle School Head Soccer Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step four of the athletic salary scale, nineteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Item R, I move to hire Leanna Wright as Middle School Girls Basketball Coach for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with compensation set on step one of the athletic salary scale, fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Teraventia?
Yes.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Boshier?
Yes.
Mr. Vane?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Assett?
Yes. Item S, I move to approve use of Facility Policy seven-one-zero for Harry Roughcorn from the Brownsville U-Soccer Association for March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, through June fifteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teraventia. Questions? All in favor?
Okay, before we go to the public comment, I just have a couple items, one I want to read here. For the best interest of the board. That's the copy in the Bangor case, the court concluded that the code confirms no authority upon individual school board members to act unilaterally under the guidance of carrying out the responsibilities of the board as a whole. The law is clear that actions by the school board are taken by collective authority. Basically, the Commonwealth Court concluded that individual school board members have no authority greater than that of a citizen. The board member must act collectively with other board members, and such action must take place during a properly, properly advertised regular special school board meeting. As for school board members' participation in IEP meetings, enclosed as a copy of the regulations. Based upon our review, the school board member cannot act on behalf of the school board in such meetings without express approval of the rest of the board, which would require a duly adopted motion. In any event, we would not recommend such participation. That's that. The other issue that I, I want to bring up in front of the board is being in transportation. The law now about homeless students has gotten out of control. And I don't know what the answer to this is, and I just wanted to brief the board a little bit. We have students who are deemed homeless, understandable. A, a, a center to go for the homeless or goodwill or wherever they go. We have transportation vans picking up students, Greensburg, Mount Pleasant, Uniontown. Further than that, they're deemed homeless. The vans pick up these children, they're coming from a home, the father's there. So, how, my question here is, this needs investigating, because then, then you have some students say, well, pick me up at my boyfriend's house, which might be in Soloway. Homeless houses in Mount Pleasant. So, you're, it's costing the district that we have about fourteen now, homeless, considered homeless. Now, I understand that that could be, but we're transferring students from Continental Two here, Mount Pleasant here, Greensburg here, because their last known district was here. But their parents, they're living with one of their parents, so how are they considered homeless? And I see this every day in my office. I see it every day. We got to send a van, and then that student calls and says, well, I'm over here at my aunt's house today. How does that work?
The new law with homeless, McKinney-Vito is the law, and it came out after Hurricane Katrina when all the students were disrupted. And what they consider to be deemed homeless, what we used to think of shelters homeless, kids now that do not have a permanent residence. So, if they were living, parents are divorced, for example, and they were living with mom in the district, and then they go live with dad in, in another school there, district, they're not considered homeless because they, that's not their permanent residence. By the McKinney-Vito, we have to oblige by that, and we have to split the cost of transportation with the district that they're residing in.
But what, my argument is that lawmakers need to take a good look at this, because this is breaking some districts.
They do. The law is, it's, it's really hurting us.
Who makes the determination? Who makes the determination that, of their, of their address? Is that up to the district to do that?
It's initially up to the district to investigate it. If, for some reason, that child feel, or the parents or the guardians feel that the district is wrong, they can then appeal their case and take it to the homeless initiative, which is out of the AIU three. We contact them regularly if we feel that there's a child that is listed as homeless and shouldn't be. So, we call, quite, we investigate every homeless case we have. When a child comes into our district and registers and says, I'm homeless, you can no longer ask them any questions. You can't check their residence by law. You cannot ask them where they live, where they came from. You cannot deny them access to the district. You have, if a student comes in and says they're homeless, and you ask them, they can go back to their home district, and then that district would transport them, or they can come to our own. And oftentimes, you'll see students that'll, like you said, go to Greensburg, and they have the right to come back and stay in their own home district.
What determines, that's my question. My question is, what determines that they become our responsibility? Isn't they, don't they have to have an affiliation with this school?
If they were originally in this district and they moved out of the area, then they could enroll in the district they moved into, or they have the choice of staying where they're at.
If they enrolled in another district, that no longer allows this to be their home district, am I correct?
But if they're considered homeless, then they have the choice.
No, listen, no, my question, the question I was asking, let's say they left this district, they went into another school district, registered with that school district, then became homeless, that no longer makes us their home school.
Correct. You are correct in that. Once they're enrolled in another district.
We need to make sure we check on that.
We do. We do. Every case of homeless, we check.
Okay.
Just wanted to...
Right, clarify this. You, you gave the example of somebody living in this district with mom. Now, they're in Mount Pleasant with dad. Well, if they're in Mount Pleasant with dad, then aren't they living with dad, and it's dad's responsibility, and now Mount Pleasant's responsibility?
They would have to enroll and...
See, I, I can, I can see them really playing this game to get out of their education and...
They do.
Let me solve, let me tell you a fact.
But if I, if, say me, if I move with my dad, then I'm my dad's responsibility and my dad's home.
A lot of times, too, requires a custody order.
Picking up a student, I can tell where the, where the address was, contact person, bill.
Yeah.
Who's bill?
Yeah.
Well, we send the van out to go pick them up.
Court order, CYS.
And, and they have a house, probably figuring this school. So, I ask my question that much, as far as I want to go with that. The last thing I want to go before a public comment is, uh... Oh, just, just a kind of a warning to parents out there, not to anyone here.
a warning to parents out there, not to anyone here. If your children are, if you live in this district and you are sending your children to another district, we will find out and you will pay the tuition. And, you know, I see, I don't have, I don't get on Facebook, but I hear that some people are bragging about how bad Brownsville School District is and they take their children to wherever. Well, that's okay, but you're gonna, we caught someone last year who bragged on Facebook about, they live in Filberts and they're taking their kid to Monellon School every day, two kids. So we found that out and they'll pay Uniontown School District whatever money they have. But they ended up coming back here. So the word out there, if you're doing something illegal, it's going to ditch you sooner or later. That's all I have.
Rachel, is there, is there a proximity limit on that?
No.
So theoretically, somebody could move to Texas.
Theoretically, yes.
And you'd have to transport them?
So I'll be transporting them all the way.
Theoretically, you're correct. However.
Yeah, I mean, that's practically, practically not. But where's the line? I guess, you know what I'm saying? Is Greensburg too far? Is?
We've had homeless students in Pittsburgh.
I understand that.
Yeah. We've had students in Pittsburgh and we, we encourage them to enroll in the district of which they are residing because it would be closer for them and.
And so dad's that, John. They don't call and say they're not going to school that day. They send a man all the way to Texas where they pick them up, they open the door, he's not going. Send the man back.
Jeremy, could you read the, the law?
Yeah, I can, I'm not.
If we feel, when a student enrolls in the district and says, I'm homeless, and we feel that they're not, we have to accept them, but then we have ten days to appeal to the homeless initiative, which we do.
How many times have we been successful in that?
We've been pretty suc, if we feel that it's inaccurate, we've been pretty successful. Yes. No, we will fight that.
I understand that from a procedural standpoint, what we have to do, but from a broader perspective, you know, not just Brownsville School District, but how do, how do we, we've all just recognized numerous loopholes in all this. Do we, who do we contact? I don't know, Mr. Solicitor, what's the right first step to say, there's something broken here, it needs to be addressed?
It's federal.
Always the same, US Congress.
So we have to go to our representatives.
Yes.
They've got to stop.
Sure.
Those in Washington.
All I'm saying is that we're talking about it here. We understand it's a problem, we should address it. Let's, let's find out what the right way is and then go forward.
This is where there's transportation costs involved and it's, it's skyrocketing, I really like it. And it's, it's, we don't have a choice.
One other thing, real quick while we're on you, she's like this, the cost of district money, um, in our federal funds, monies that come from the federal government. We, the federal government took another one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars off of our federal programs. And the formula they use, our, our, um.
Poverty.
Our poverty rate went up. So therefore normally, we would get X amount of dollars for that poverty rate. Our poverty rate went up in the district and the amount of money from federal programs went down one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And it's possible for next year as well. Just an FYI.
At this time, public comment on anything, now's your chance. Come forward, state your name, make your business. Anybody want anything?
I'll take it. Good afternoon, my name is Kyle. One of my daughters comes here to the school. The only real question I have for you guys is, what was your thought process behind deciding not to inform the remaining parents with this incident? Why I should have to find out via social media and/or the news media? And what makes me comfortable to think that my student is still safe in this district when I feel that the communication is broken?
Based on the information I received from our administrators, all parents have notified you. And I'm going to have to refer to Mr. Clemmer.
I talked to Ross, across the country on the parents. I don't need concern with if the false information reported on social media is presented by the school. They've all made a complaint and they should have waited for it.
And I understand that, but what about the parents that weren't involved but still go to this community and still go to the school? At some, at some point.
I, I, I thought, I thought we were talking about people.
No, no, I'm not, I'm sorry. I should have clarified.
I'm sorry. We, in this, all disciplinary actions, whatever level they are, we deal with the students involved, whether it be one or as many as you've heard. When we notify the state police, we look at all the information we have and we follow this on our safety plan. If it concurs that this is something we need to do, then we would notify en masse. In fact, um, what we're attempting to do for next year is purchase a, and I'm not getting off the subject, this direct, this relates directly to your question. There is a program that we can actually notify parents on the phone, issues. But issues like this, at this point, did not qualify for them because of the fact, it was determined based on the investigations and the state police that there was no need. If there was a need, we certainly would have followed through with some type of, I'll call it a phone bank or an email or a website, because we do have notifications on there. But it just, based on the information we had. And I know under the social media, there's been a lot of misinformation. I don't know what you read, but there has been a lot of misinformation sent out to the public. The information we have, the facts that we have, qualified that we didn't have to do that, not just from our source, but from state police as well.
And I appreciate the effort that everybody wants to, don't get me wrong. I think it was effective in terms of making sure that the, you spearheaded it. But my concern is just that, being informed as a community member and as, as having two daughters that will be attending this school, that the communication is effective, even though it seems like, yes, I wasn't directly involved, but it's something that I need to be informed of. I don't want to know every little time someone goes to the office, that doesn't make sense. But this was big enough that I think it warranted at least the rest of the remaining parents to say, here's what happened, here's how we effectively handled it. Case closed.
Well, that's a good point, I'll tell you why. We're actually under ready for our safety policy or safety procedures, mass, based on what state is directing us to do. And that could be determined as something, and again, we're still working on it, but in the, for the next, next school, the fourteen fifty, that may be something that may be inputted, especially it may expedite if we are able to purchase this new software. This may be one issue. We try not to, it's not that the district or no one here, not one individual or group was trying to hide anything, it was just a matter of procedure and the facts that were in front of us. We don't want to cause a panic in the community. I mean, look at what you saw on Facebook, et cetera, that was false. Mr. Clemmer, I'm going to put you on the spot again. You received several calls from parents, and I'll let you, you took the calls, so why don't you just tell the people here what happened?
I received, like I said, approximately twenty-one calls and most of the parent were, because they were positive, they just wanted to get their concern. And I know that the situation was under control, there was no threat. But again, it came to me with basically false accusations they got from Twitter, Facebook.
Just a clarification, yes, it wasn't for Facebook in some instance, but it was a news media outlet clip, so it wasn't something that was said, it was something that was on the news anyway, just restated through the social media. So that's where I'm getting that from.
You didn't provide enough information that I could, that would have prompted reality. Some of the parents wanted the proper information, which I could not give out, but as far as the situation, I am working on a procedure, procedurally, you can also.
Thank you.
We appreciate your feedback, as I said, we're, we're building something, we're trying to get some kind of mass, something, we're working on it, but we appreciate that. We, we, we don't want to scare the community as well. You know, a lot of times we get a bad rap, there's misconception by people within the district, and unfortunately, we get a bad rap. There's a lot of good things that come, come out of this school, you saw tonight, not only in athletics, but academics. We have good staff, we have good participation with our board members in activities. So there's a lot of good here, unfortunately. There's, there's certain groups that want to throw out information that's not false and scares good people like you. Any questions, you can call me or any of the building principals, depending on, you know, what, what grade your children are in. We'll tell you whatever we can legally. What's frustrating, not only to this school and to administrators, is when something happens, student A says this or does this against student B. Okay? We, we handle student B, okay? But that's, parents of student B want to know what we did with this child. And legally, we have to protect the aggressor as well as the victim's rights. It's frustrating because I know some parents, they want to know if things were handled accordingly. But unfortunately, the only thing that we are administrators are told to do is we handle the situations by policies that have been approved by the board. Thank you.
Can I add to all of this?
Please state your name now.
Michael, Michael, just make sure I can just go.
And I appreciate everything you guys are saying, absolutely. We want to protect every child in this school, not just the victim or the person that had even started it. I'm not asking for information about what happened or who it happened to. All we want is something in return. So we're not hearing from Facebook rumors and, and, and all of that, because that's all we get, is Facebook rumors. I don't want to hear Facebook rumors, I want to hear reality and truth. A simple paper sent home that said, this happened, this is, this is what the precautions that we're taking as a board, as a principal, as, just to clarify and give us peace, that's all we ask for is peace.
I, I, I think this, this, I'm not that person that, I think this is what, where the plus schools have, I think that, that's going to resolve a lot of the, the negative information on, you know, the Facebook and the Twitter. And you're laughing, I'm just not a tech guy. But, but I think once we get this in place, it's immediate, it's fast, we can give basic information to, to the parents.
Your procedure to diagnose and.
Well.
Because I mean, we were talking a year from now.
We can send a letter. Yeah. Information can be sent, I, I think. By letter. Either by letter, but that's costly to the district, it's possible that on our website, yeah, on our website we have. It would be basic, because there's some information, believe me, we're told, we cannot say. Just the basic stuff that she wants.
That'd be a generic statement.
But I also want to make sure my child is safe, period. Because I don't even, I don't even create it at all. I mean, my daughter's at school walking around with all my head.
We could do a website.
She may be just in some outstanding, they got her, and I don't want that ever.
We're just trying to monetize the law.
Absolutely, and I understand that, but, but by not telling us, all that did was create a bigger issue. That's all it did.
Why don't we authorize the staff to place, in circumstances that it is, a basic informational post on our website?
For situations like this.
In situations like this, yeah.
Until we get something, as you're, what you're talking about. But send that information home with each child, so their parents know, go to the website, sue you here, so. No, we're, we're trying to minimize the steps and go right to the website.
Well, it would be nice if the webpage was updated. You go to the webpage and Mr. Gates, Mr. See, aren't even on the webpage, and you look at the webpage, it's outdated. It would be a daily update or a weekly update.
I think that everybody's calendar is still.
Yeah.
Go ahead, speak up, so everybody.
We have a new website that Brian Boyd has been working on quite extensively, that's going to be live. I don't know where, Brian, where are you?
You can't hear. You can't hear. Turn you back.
Okay. Brian has been working on the website.
Wait a minute, Brian. If he can't hear.
I can't see him.
Hey, Brian, come on up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could somebody?
This is for Brian, you have a producer with a library, so I was, if you call him, I'm going to.
Website.
Actually, didn't really hear the question.
The new website. The new website.
Currently working on, so that should actually be in place, probably over the next few weeks, you know, most of the information transferred over to it, because there's a vast amount of documents that have to be re-uploaded to it.
The problem, the basic concern was the instances that occurred such as this week, that we could post information immediately, that the community could go to that website and see, and get a basic status update in those types of sources. I assume this website, I haven't been doing that.
That won't be a problem.
Thank you.
Back to the comment, I'm, I'm a parent too, I agree, if you wanted all this information. And if we get a website.
If we, however we try to disseminate that information, Facebook, Facebook is still going to beat it. There's still going to be rumors out there on Facebook. That's, that's what I worry, because, because boom, it's out there before. Because as a district, we still have to go through a process. And by the time the process goes through and we get the information legally out there, it's going to be all over Facebook, you know? And whether it's the truth or whatever, and it's, it, it's a hard thing. It's, it's because of the process, because, you know, if this district would release any information about your child out there, we're not allowed to do that. So we have to be very careful with what we do. It's going to have to be a generic type of statement, but I agree, it should be out there for you.
She, I mean, talking about, she's in the same period. Like, if I wanted to understand her, could I sit down and have a conversation with her?
Yeah.
Did she burp, please, somebody?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to re.
Don't you want, don't you want to be able to?
Yes, yes.
And, and I think to, to bounce off of what Mr. Dorsey said, sometimes what you hear on Facebook.
It's running already.
If something happens on day one, the investigation may take not just one day, but another day to get as much information as possible.
But if that, I mean, you're, you're, you're doing something.
If I'm understanding.
You're not hearing anything from, from the school.
Even if you heard, even if you heard, there's an investigation of such an incident going on. You know, you have that.
Exactly, if there's a generic statement.
If I'm hearing you right, you just want maybe a one paragraph, paragraph, this is what happened today, we're investigating.
Now I can sit down and talk to my daughter.
Yeah.
And you know that you have a one stop shop.
And you know what? By you talking to your daughter, by you talking to your daughter, you might find out some information and the next day call up to the school, hey, guess what I heard?
Anyway, it may not have been a lot, but.
Yeah.
Not that it sounded cruel, but I mean, my daughter wasn't affected by it, but one day she may, like, kids are cruel these days. I mean, it wasn't just two years ago, two girls killed a girl in Morgantown, like, you, I just want to be able to be there for my, my child, no, no matter.
Absolutely.
Okay.
One, one good point, because solicitors may, we may even have to watch the generic terminology that we use.
Absolutely.
You know, just so you're aware that this will be a process, that, so wording may be very generic, but it'll be based on legality, so the district or an individual or even an administrator cannot be held liable. These are good ideas, we'll implement as soon as we can, based on Brian getting that website moving and based on the solicitor giving us, I hate to say terminology, but I'll say that for lack of a better word, to give more information to the community. But I do want to thank you, these are all good things coming out of it. We're not here to hide anything, there's not enough time in the day to hide. I'd rather get information out to you. The investigation was thorough, um, we did everything properly, but, you know, coming as a parent out from another district, thinking back on a situation that happened in that district not long ago, they had this phone system and we got to call that evening with a brief clarification and it, and it helped. So this website thing may, may work very well until we get this other system. While we're on this, before I take any more comment, should we or will we be doing any kind of mock drills to simulate something that happened in our school? What do we do? Do we bring in someone to show us what to do? Well, we'll. Yeah, I've been in contact and we're almost there, believe it or not. We will contact the Fayette County Emergency Management Agency. And once we're done, we will, we will, we will start mock drills of certain events. And then we can notify the parents, these are mock drills, you know, so there's no scare. But the next step, as soon as, I got one more piece to put in, then this policy or this procedure comes to the board for their review and input. From that point then, we'll probably do it in May sometime when the weather's better and follow through on some mock drills.
But we also have our own safety team that we're.
That's, yeah, well, it'll be to the board and the commander. Yep. So we're almost there, folks. And just while some of the public's here, if you happen to hear it's a code red at the school, that means you can't come up, you can't, I know you want to run to your child, but they're not going to let you go. I mean, last year we had a state policeman arrest a lady who was trying to get in central school. It's code red, that, that means they have it under control, they don't want the parents trying to run up there. Code yellow is warning, isn't it? It's a warning, parents can, on, on the permission of. And we have so many domestic disputes, you would not believe, you would not believe some of the things that's happening. But I understand the feedback very much. Is there any more public comment on any items, anything? Because this is your last chance to take a shot here. Because we'll see you next month. Unless.
Hi, I'm from Morgantown. My comments have to do with the security of the schools. Over the course of a couple of years, I have visited many schools around the area, and it seems that Brownsville may be the only area that doesn't have all the doors locked and a buzzer to buzz in. And I'm just wondering, like, your take on that?
We, we don't, we now have the security person in each building, the principals, particularly the elementary, have their security person at the front door and there's usually just one door open after school is in session. Last month, the district passed a motion to purchase equipment to make some changes to exactly what you're saying at the high school and middle school, where the doors, there'd be a buzzer system and a camera system where you can.
Yes, I know all the other schools seem to have that.
Well.
You have the center, you have the ringel, you have the terminals, you have the buzzer, you have the main door, and the door open.
We're doing that at the middle school and high school. At the elementaries, we're doing what we are doing now because of the fact that we're building a new facility, and that will be incorporated into that.
We'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anyone else? And by the way, the new police policy will enhance security for our, our school district and our children.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just to wrap up on a good note here, I wanted to compliment Mr. Greg Bonna and his students. And his physics class were participating in the BattleBots competition. They spent the last six weeks working with the engineering staff at Fenner Dunlop in Allison. They completed that robot and they were preliminaries last Friday, and will be moving on to competition at California University in April. They were, they're, I want to call professionalism in, in, in all aspects was, was remarkable. The dedication to the project, and the way that they conducted themselves, articulated themselves, and the effort they put forth was tremendous. So I commend Mr. Bonna and those students for that wish and what of going forward with this competition.
Very good. Okay, last chance till next month. Anyone? Me. Motion to adjourn. I have a comment. I heard several times tonight about the procedure, the policy, the safety of our children. I would like to make a motion to go into executive session, so I have an opportunity to speak with my legal counsel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Acid.
Yes.
Mr. Vane.
Yes.
Mr. Breschier.
No.
Mr. Delaroz.
No.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gates.
No.
Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. Seeley.
Yes.
Mrs. Taravich.
Yes.
Okay, in for what reason? Legal matters. Legal matters. Okay, uh, public dinner. We were in executive session, we're now at eight-thirty for legal matters. We went for legal matters at eight-thirty. I need a motion to come back in session. Motion by Director Taravich, second by Director Gates. All in favor? Aye. Again. Any public comment? I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion? Mr. Director Seeley, second by Director Gates, adjourned, all in favor.
The cameraman made it.